Good evening. I will call this virtual meeting of the Housing Authority for the City of Salem for Tuesday, May 26, 2020 to order if the recorder will call the roll.
Vice Chair Kazer.
Present.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yito.
Commissioner Nanki is absent and in his place is Trevor Phillips filling in as guest counselor.
Here.
Commissioner Leung.
Here.
Commissioner Asik.
Here.
Chair Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Nordike.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Thank you. And if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Commissioner Kazer, the consent calendar. Do we have any, first of all, do we have any additions or deletions?
We do not have any additions or deletions.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
Yes, I move the consent calendar. For a second. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who the second was.
Lewis.
Lewis, thank you. Counselor Kazer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is only one item, item 2.1A, which are the April 27, 2020 draft Salem Housing Authority minutes.
Any discussion? Will the recorder please take the vote?
Mr. Leung.
Aye.
Commissioner Asik.
Aye.
Chair Hoy.
Aye.
Commissioner Nordike.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kazer.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We have no public hearings, no special orders of business, but we do have an information report. And I see Nicole Yoots, our housing administrator with us. And I would like to start, before you start your presentation, Ms. Yoots, I would like to ask you a question. And that's regarding, you know, we have a lot of vulnerable people in our, in our housing units throughout the city. And I'm just curious how they're doing during this pandemic. Are they, how, how are people making, making their way? Or people, or do we have an outbreak at all? Or can you just kind of give us a bit of a status on the COVID situation?
Certainly. I'm Nicole Yoots. I'm the housing administrator for Salem Housing Authority. I can tell you that out of all of the owned and managed properties of Salem Housing Authority, we have no COVID-19 confirmed or presumptive cases at this time. Our tenants are managing well. Obviously, there is some challenges with layoffs, different circumstances with distance learning. But overall, everybody is doing well. The Housing Authority has stepped in as a team and is being extremely supportive of all of our clients. Even though our offices may not be open to the public, all 46 staff members are working behind the scenes to ensure that everybody is taken care of, that tenant requests are still being done quickly, that rents being paid to landlords, that work orders are being completed. Behind the scenes, we really haven't skipped a beat and everything is still going well.
That is excellent to hear. I really appreciate it. And I'm just going to say that, you know, none of that would be possible, especially the, 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 the health of our tenants without the just excellent work of you and your staff. And I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yeah. Please pass that along to everyone. It's, it doesn't go unnoticed.
Definitely, I will. It's, it's been a challenging time, but it's been a great team effort. And it really came down to educating our clients, keeping our buildings safe and, and sanitary at all times, and ensuring that all of our seniors have face masks and what they need to be able to function on a daily basis. There's been some real challenging times when, when the transportation services were down. We stepped in and made sure things got delivered that were absolutely essential items, down to toilet paper, medication, anything that might have to keep them going.
Excellent. Before we get into other questions, did you have anything from your manager report that you wanted to share with us?
I do. I wanted to bring up the, the statistics on the page regarding our tenant occupancy for our buildings. Many of you may not be aware, or you probably are aware, that back in the end of the winter last year, we closed on several large construction projects right before all the COVID-19 hit. And we've continued all five of those construction projects through this entire, during this entire time. Four of those projects require a lot of relocation, a lot of coordination, a lot of safety and additional measures being taken. The occupancy numbers that you see on this report are not a reflection of what the Housing Authority typically does on a regular basis. So you're seeing some lower numbers such as North Gate, scattered site homes, different things like that. We want to just ensure you that those are a reflection of units that are not currently occupied and under construction or renovation, and that those families are fully being taken care of. And we intend to fully occupy all of the units as soon as they're returned to us in a full remodel capacity. The units are coming along beautifully. I don't know if any of you have been out to any of our sites to, to see the, the facelift that's going on. But Metalark, North Gate, Livingston, they're all coming along wonderfully. New windows, new siding, new landscaping, new trash enclosures. It's pretty much from top to bottom. And our contractors are doing an excellent job of keeping it going during, through all the pandemic. And we're keeping compliant with all the regulatory requirements of the program.
That's fantastic. Commissioner Anderson, did you have a question?
Thank you. I'm not, yeah, I'm not muted. Thanks, Nicole. I agree with Counselor Hoy's preliminary comments. And I talked to you this afternoon and expressed those and asked that you also pass them on to your staff. You already answered one question that you and I discussed about, that's the occupancy rates. I have another one, and I'm looking at the HRAP statistics on, oh, I don't know, the third page of the management report. Then I'm looking at, you say, it's a graph or table up at the top. 249 currently enrolled, but only 49 are currently housed. I had a big concern about that, and you assuaged it very nicely, and I hope you could do it to the rest of the council, too.
Sure. So as you can see, the statistical numbers, the 249 is what's currently enrolled into the program. That includes a total for 282 that are enrolled plus their family members. Forty-nine of those are housed, and 57 of them are unhoused and being worked with our staff members to, to get housed. And during that, so the other amount of individuals have actually moved on to the Section 8 program and graduated from the program and are now currently under stable housing through the Section 8 program.
So in effect, it's a double success. You got them into the HRAP program, and then you got them out of the HRAP program into the voucher program.
That's correct. And we're continuing through the pandemic. We've actually made four placements during the pandemic time, but seven individuals total that were housed.
Now, all we have to do is get HUD to increase the amount of the vouchers, and we'll really be off and running.
Yes. We, we are at capacity. As I spoke to you earlier today, our voucher program, you'll, you're seeing our statistics. We're, one of the few housing authorities, we're at full capacity pretty much at this point. We are requesting additional mainstream vouchers in attempt to keep placing individuals in need in our area. The one comment that I will make in the community report section is that you'll see that the tenant request numbers, as of today, we've done a total of 134 tenant requests, meaning individuals have lost some sort of income into their household. The overall housing assistance payment has increased our output of HAP for $24,340 every single month due to those tenant requests due to loss of income.
Thank you. Director Rutherford.
I think Nicole could also provide an update on Redwood Crossings as well. She had some information she was sharing with me earlier today that I think you might be interested in.
Excellent.
So the much anticipated Redwood Crossings, which is our 37-unit permanent supportive housing complex with six transitional respite units, is nearing the end of its completion. They're scheduling for substantial completion the middle to end of June. This also plays into effect a little bit with one set of hardware that we're still waiting on that's coming from the East Coast that is being slightly delayed. So we're highly anticipating that for it to arrive. But the complex is painted, new siding, windows, everything's turning out beautiful, and we're looking forward to getting that project up and going. We are working with the Emergency Operations Center to ensure the safety of all of our clients when we do open those doors and get it open in the safest manner possible.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Yoots?
Yes, I have a question. This is Counselor Leung.
Yes, go ahead.
I had lost reception, so I might have missed a section that you might have addressed. First, I just want to say, you know, thank, I thank you for doing such a great job with getting the masks out for distribution to our seniors, youth, and families, most in need, 110 masks. That's amazing, and I'm very proud of, and excited to hear that's the kind of outreach that the, the department's been doing. I had a question about the HRAP statistics evicted after voucher. There's four listed. Are you still supporting those individuals who were evicted?
Typically, those are individuals that have lost the connection. We attempt to continue to try to work with them. But once they've gone through the entire homeless rental assistance program and they've exceeded their allotment of funds for that, they've gone to the voucher program, and for various reasons, they may be even two years into the voucher program, have maybe taken a few steps back, backwards, and not compliant with either regulatory criminal or some other course that we're just unable to salvage the ability to keep them on the voucher program. They also have the right to reapply for any of the programs through the Arches program. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just make staff and others listening aware that we have at least two counselors that are having intermittent technical issues. So if people are not responsive right away, it's because they, we're having a couple of folks that keep dropping out, and they keep coming back. So just be aware of that. Are there any other questions for staff? Commissioner Nordike.
I'm mostly just raising my hand to make sure you can see that I'm raising your hand. I'm raising my hand. I can't see anyone right now. I can see myself and I can hear, but I can't see any presentation. So I think we should just keep moving forward. I don't want to bog things down, but just know that I'm blind. All I can do is listen to the audio of the hearing right now.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. See, no further business for the Housing Authority of the City of Salem. I will adjourn this meeting. Mr. Mayor.
City of Salem to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Kazer.
Present.
Board Member Anderson.
Likewise.
Board Member Nanki is absent. Guest Counselor Phillips. Board Member Leung.
Here.
Board Member Asik.
Present.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Nordike.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Bennett.
Here. Counselor Hoy, any additions or deletions?
We do have one addition to the agenda. It's a, just a correction on a staff report on item 2.3A.
Alrighty. Anything else you want to go over on the consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Second, Kazer.
Thank you. The consent calendar consists of the April 27, 2020 Urban Renewal Agency Minutes, item 2.2A, Acceptance of the Jury, Department's Tax, Increment, Finance, I'm sorry, Funding District, and item 2.3A, Fairview Urban Renewal Area Small Business Forgivable Loan Program. Item 2.3B, Global Front Downtown Urban Renewal Grant Program Exception for 990 Broadway LLC. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Okay. I don't see any polls, so yes, Counselor Phillips.
So against Counselor Phillips here, just under 2.3A, we included awards two and three as affected, but I, I think word one may also be affected.
Okay.
I checked.
Right, we'll put them in there, too.
Okay.
We'll just put the whole council in. Everybody's always pleased with these kinds of programs.
All right.
Any other, any other discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oops, I can't do that. We're going to do a roll call. I apologize. Cool, now I know what you're all going to vote, so.
Okay. Board Member Anderson.
Aye.
Board Member Nanki is absent. Board Member Kazer.
Aye.
Board Member Asik.
Aye.
Board Member Hoy.
Aye.
Board Member Nordike.
Aye.
Board Member Lewis.
Aye.
Board Member Leung.
Aye.
And Chair Bennett.
Aye.
And Chair Bennett, we need a vote and a second for the addition to the agenda as well.
That was unanimous. I watched everyone's lips move.
Thank you.
I can see you, Counselor Nordike. I watched you. Okay, I think that's it. We're adjourned. I'm going to call to order the Salem City Council meeting for May 26. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Kazer.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Nanki is absent. Guest Counselor Phillips.
Here.
Counselor Leung.
Here.
Counselor Asik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Nordike.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Counselor Hoy, any revisions or additions?
No.
Alrighty.
Excuse me, there is one addition of a supplemental report.
At 3, 3.8, 3A?
Yes.
My apologies. I move approval of additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Kazer. Okay, if you want to call the roll.
Sure. Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Kazer.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki is absent. Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Asik.
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Hey, this is an opportunity for members of the council to comment, if anyone would like to comment. Don't see anyone. Ah, yes. Yes, Counselor Phillips.
First, I just wanted to, to thank everybody for allowing me to be here. Specifically, I want to thank Brad Nanki for inviting me to serve as a guest counselor tonight. And I just, I greatly appreciate his 20 years of service. So I just wanted to thank him.
Well, on behalf of all of us, congratulations to you as well for your successful election.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I've been out and about a little bit in the last several weeks. About every day or every third day, I go to the post office, I stop by City Hall, I go to the grocery store, and I notice people who are there, but the vast majority of them are doing what I do, but a lot of people aren't. And I'm just concerned about this because you're not just wearing the mask for yourself, you're wearing the mask for others. And it doesn't take long. You can see right here, I'm putting it on. This is a mask that was made for me by a neighbor. And I know that the city has masks. And so if you cannot afford a mask or can't find one, you talk to City Power, Steve Powers at the City Manager's Office, and we'll get you a mask. And I see, maybe the mayor's got one, too. I don't know.
I've got a stack of them that the National Mayors Association sent me.
So we can get you a mask. There goes Counselor Hoy. It looks like a Trailblazers mask. I wasn't sure there. But the point is.
Very exotic.
It's easy to wear these. It shows civic involvement. It shows that you are concerned not just about your own self or your own freedom or whatever you want to call it, but you're concerned about society as a whole. So I urge every citizen of Salem, when they're out, to follow what the CDC says. Wear your mask and help society as a whole. And I'm taking it off now because there's nobody within six feet social distancing of me, but I really urge people to wear your mask.
All right. Well, thank you, Counselor, for that help, helpful hint. Who else have we got that wants to share? Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Counselors, I'd like to give a, a brief reopening update, if, if that would be all right at this time.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Make it long. Go ahead. Tell us everything's open. Come on.
Well, staff, staff have been preparing a reopening plan for city operations. With Marion and Polk County's now in phase one, the city can begin implementation of a reopening. Many city services continued unchanged by the COVID-19 restrictions. City services are being delivered online and by phone. The Emergency Operations Center and departments have been preparing a plan that welcomes back the public and city employees into a safe environment. We are establishing a minimum required standard that all departments will meet when reopening. For some city operations, returning to in-person delivery is needed to ensure all city residents are served. Our focus for reopening is on services that some in our community are unable to access online. Lack of technology, complexity of an issue or question, or personal choice, combined for the need to physically reopen some offices before others. Our first focus is on the Permit Application Center, cashiers, and some library services. The Permit Application Center will be opening June 22. Our cashiers will be opening June 22 as well. Today, we started curbside book and material pickups at the Broadway location, the library location, and we will be continuing that. The dates allow time to complete changes to protect the health of customers and employees, most notably the installation of Plexiglas and other barriers, barriers to the virus, and for policies that are being finalized with, in consultation with employees. Dates for other services, including summer recreation, are being set through discussions with departments and guided by the state's reopening phases. For all of our services, we will continue with the robust online availability that increased dramatically at the start of the Stay Home, Save Lives Executive Order. We're also putting in several precautions to protect health. Council discussed masks just now. We will be requiring masks for indoor services. Wearing masks is a proven method to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We will be expanding voluntary self-check health stations for employees. Public Works, Police, Fire, and 911 are currently providing self-check health stations. There is no record-keeping, and it's not mandatory, but we're strongly encouraging employees to check their health when they come into work. Gloves will be mandatory for positions that handle mail, checks, or cash directly from the public. And we're reviewing how to assist county public health with contact tracing. City service sites may have voluntary documentation of visitors in case there is a positive COVID-19 case. This information would then be shared with county health to trace back the people who may have been exposed. Our plan to reopen city offices and facilities is robust and is motivated by protecting the health and safety of the employees and community while serving the community. The plan is built upon the governor's public health framework for reopening Oregon. Council and the community will be kept updated as the city services reopening plan is finalized. I did want to share with you results from today's discussion with the Emergency Operations Center and Department Director. So we will continue to provide updates to the mayor and counselors as the dates and plans for city services are, are finalized. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On the library service, can you drop off books yet? Or do you, do they want you to still hold them?
You can, but we're encouraging you to keep the books.
Okay.
Please, please, please keep the books, but if for some reason you had to drop them off, we, we will take them. But we are encouraging library customers to, to keep the materials.
The other question I get, and I'm sure other counselors do, is, is playgrounds. What, what's the timeline or what's it look like? I don't know if timeline's the right question.
That is one of the, that is one of the services that we're still evaluating. And also, while the, the guidelines are guidelines, we are paying close attention to the guidance from, from the governor as the OHA and, and her staff are, are updating and revising earlier guidelines and restrictions regarding public facilities such as playgrounds.
And youth sports, kind of the same situation?
The actual youth sport leagues, our recreational programs, we will have an update for mayor and counselors. Could be as early as next week. Staff met, staff met recently, and, and we believe we'll be able to provide some recreational programming later this summer.
Great. Well, thank you for opening the dog park. Really, we've been hearing, I think, about that. It was, I'm glad. How's that working out?
It, it, it's, it's working out very well. It provided some additional space for our park visitors. We were expecting a, a big turnout that weekend, and I think that turnout did occur. Regarding particularly recreational facilities and the guidance from the governor, she recently provided guidance on tennis courts. So we're looking at that and, and, and doing what we can to reopen our, our tennis courts.
Good. I know former Counselor Paul Wolf is following that one real closely. He's a tennis, longtime tennis player. All right. Any, any questions for the manager? Thank you very much, Mr. Powers. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Alrighty, I've got a couple of proclamations for this evening. Whereas the 1990 passage of an amendment to a joint resolution of Congress, President George H.W. Bush declared the month of May Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, noting the significant contributions in science, commerce, education, and the arts made by Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. Whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have demonstrated their dedication to ideals upon which the United States was founded and have worked for the advancement of human rights and democratic ideals throughout the world. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have a proud legacy of service and dedication to our community, including the Marshallese Islander and Micronesian Islander communities. And whereas we recognize Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders whose love of family and community have helped to sustain our city, particularly through the commitment of the Micronesian Islander community, M.I.C., MIC, and Paradise of Samoa. And whereas the city is grateful to the members of the Mayor's International Council who highlight the heritage of the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities, now therefore I, Chair Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim May 2020 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and ask that residents of Salem join me in this special tribute to celebrate the contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. And I'll be giving this proclamation in recognition of the work done by Counselor Leung with the Micronesian Islander community. So thank you, Counselor Leung, for all the work you've done on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I have a moment to say something?
You certainly can.
Thank you. So first off, I would like to thank you, Mayor and City Council, for today's proclamation, recognizing May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Asian Pacific encompasses all of the Asian continents and the Pacific Islanders of Melanesia, Micronesia, and Polynesia. And like most commemorative months, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month originated within Congress. Normally, when we were reading this proclamation, we would have our Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander community members joining us to celebrate within the council chambers. Unfortunately, COVID-19 made that impossible this year. And I'm hopeful, though, that next year we'll be able to be together in the same room, in the same space, celebrating this, the month together. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for all your work on this. I have one second one. Whereas celebrating 56 years as a national organization, community action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across the country by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life. is a robust state and local force connecting people to life changing services and creating pathways to prosperity. And whereas in the Salem area, Mid Willamette Valley Community Action builds and promotes stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing our community. And whereas Mid Willamette Valley Community Action promotes and delivers broad based solutions to challenges that support more opportunities for families and children to succeed. And whereas insisting on engaged participation, Mid Willamette Valley Community Action strives to ensure that all community sectors have a voice and will be heard. Now therefore I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, to hereby proclaim May twenty twenty as Community Action Month. It's gonna be a busy month here and call upon all Salem residents to recognize Community Action's fifty sixth anniversary as a national organization, as well as Mid Willamette Community Action Action's exceptional work that makes Salem a better place for all of us to live. And I'll be passing this proclamation along to Jimmy Jones, Director of the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action and his staff, who we all know work tirelessly in behalf of Salem's most vulnerable residents through their arches program. So thank you very much. Okay, we will move along to the consent calendar. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar with the following exceptions. Item two point three C pulled by Counselor Kazer with assists from Lewis and Anderson. Item two point three E pulled by Counselor Anderson. Item two point. I'm sorry, two point three A Counselor pulled by Counselor Kazer, two point three B pulled by Counselor Kazer and two point three H pulled by Counselor Anderson and two point three J pulled by Counselor Anderson.
And two point three E. Do you have anyone pulling that?
Anderson.
Okay. Okay, so we have two point three A, two point three B, two point three C, two point three E, two point three H and two point three J being pulled. I got that right?
Believe so.
Okay. So around make a motion on what's left?
I need a second. I moved approval already.
Second.
Second by Kazer.
All right, that leaves us with item two point one A, the May eleventh twenty twenty draft city council minutes. Item two point one B, the May eleventh draft twenty twenty city council work session minutes. Item two point two A adopts resolution twenty twenty dash twenty one, amending resolution twenty seventeen dash fifty to update the city's public records policy. Item two point two B dedication of public right of way on Four Point Street Northeast. Item two point two C transfer fiscal year twenty twenty general fund budget appropriations. And item two point three D amendment to purchase and sell agreement with Westwood Homes LLC. Item two point three F is an intergovernmental agreement with Marion County with Marion County for grant funding for economic development activities. Item two point three G is an amendment to lease with Rudy's Steakhouse LLC. Item two point three I is regarding fire and police management compensation. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Very good. Could I? Could someone tell me what the just maybe the very short version of what changes are going on in our public records policy? Just a real short version of it.
Yes, Mayor Hachison's city attorney. So the last legislative session changed a number of the public records laws. The main purpose of this change is to update our policy so it's consistent in making those references to the state laws. In addition, the city has been working diligently on providing an online public records portal that's going to go live in June. And this will allow members of the public to submit a request online and get the records online and pay online. So we needed to make some updates to the policy to respond to that.
So this will generally make it easier for the public to get a hold of documents they're seeking or records they're seeking?
It should. It should make it a lot easier and a lot quicker.
A lot cheaper?
In some cases, if the records are easily available and it's easier for us to upload them, there's there's less copying involved. So less time for us to research them. So the 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 staff work still needs to be done to find the records. But the transaction costs will go down a lot.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions on the consent calendar? Hey, if the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Nordike. Hi. Counselor Lewis.
Hi.
Counselor Kazer.
Hi.
Counselor Anderson.
Hi.
Counselor Niki is absent. Counselor Leung.
Hi.
Counselor Osik.
Hi.
Counselor Hoy.
Hi.
And Mayor Bennett.
Hi. Motion passes. Okay, we have a public hearing. Number twenty dash one eighty seven.
Okay, the city council will now conduct a public hearing concerning amendments to the twenty fifteen, twenty nineteen consolidated plan, federal program, citizen participation plan, twenty eighteen annual action plan and twenty nineteen annual action plan. The hearing will begin with the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett, Council. I'm Shelley A. Hinger, Federal Programs Manager in the Urban Development Department. I will share my screen with you so that you can see tonight's presentation. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to hear and comment on the proposed amendments to the twenty fifteen, twenty nineteen consolidated plan, the citizens' participation plan, the twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen Community Development Block Grant annual action plans, which include resources to address the impact of COVID nineteen on the Salem community. The proposed amendments include one point three million dollars in CDBG resources. The CDBG projects recommended fall into the priority areas of addressing homelessness, increasing affordable housing, looking at economic development opportunities to support micro businesses and additional supportive services for those persons who are low to moderate income. We will begin with amendment two to the consolidated plan. The consolidated plan did not anticipate that we will be experiencing the coronavirus. And it did not include that we would need additional support such as food, mortgage or rent payments or assistance for small businesses to keep them from having to close. Therefore, we would like to add those things to the consolidated plan so that the annual action plan can reflect what the community needs are today versus what the community needs were in twenty fifteen. In addition to that, we are asking to modify the citizen participation plan inasmuch as when the CARES Act was enacted, the supplemental funding HUD also provided some regulatory relief to ensure that the funds were available to the community as soon as possible. Two of the waivers provided by HUD allowed the city to reduce the public notice period from thirty days to five days. In addition, it allowed for virtual meetings and both of those are reflected in the proposed amended citizen participation plan. Amendment number two to the twenty eighteen annual action plan includes increased funding for Garden Services Incorporated and Integrated Services for Living. Both received previous allocation of funding, but due to the increased rate in construction costs and because these are both Davis Bacon Wage projects, their costs have increased and they've asked for some additional gap financing. Therefore, sixty thousand dollars is being proposed to be added to the garden of services as they complete some of the recycling center modernization as well as a hundred and one thousand five hundred and thirty dollars to rehab homes for persons living with disabilities. Amendment number three to the twenty nineteen annual action plan, the sources include some funds from the Salem Housing Authority's twenty nineteen allocation for the rehabilitation of Yaquena Hall. I think that the community is aware that there has been a pause in getting that project to begin. And in the meantime, the community needs the money today. And in Salem Housing Authority understood this need and therefore we've requested that that four hundred and fifty one thousand dollars be used today and that we would backfill that with the twenty twenty one allocation so that that much needed project could proceed. In addition to that, we had seventy three thousand dollars in undesignated resources from our twenty nineteen allocation. Plus HUD provided us seven hundred and seventy five thousand eight hundred and thirty seven dollars in new CDBG funds to address COVID nineteen impact in the community. That those were the sources of funds and then these are some of the uses for that twenty nineteen AAP amendment. Of course, the city will need some resources because we're going to increase the number of programs that we will be running and therefore there's an allocation in there for the city program administration. Cities allowed up to twenty percent of the resources to operate programs. In addition to that, we have some new programs, again, the Emergency Mortgage Assistance Program, micro business assistance, additional resources for meals on wheels so that our seniors can get additional food delivered to their home. And then some rental and utility assistance programs based upon the fact that there was an executive order of the governor where there was a rent moratorium for both residential and commercial properties. And they have been in place since April and we anticipate that they will go until the end of the month of June. We feel that we need to keep a balance just in case there's another activity that arise that we haven't yet experienced through this COVID pandemic. And so there will be a little bit over four hundred thousand dollars set aside for future needs and we will come back to the council as well as to the public in regards to what those resources would be spent on. Our public process, as we talked earlier about a five day comment period, it ended on Friday, May the twenty second. And then the staff led a virtual public comment session on May twentieth. And then tonight's public hearing is the third opportunity for the community to provide any input in regards to what we're proposing to do. There was a legal notice published in the paper of greatest community circulation. This was placed on the city's website as well as notices on the city's social media sites. It was also a community connection on the fifteenth of May. Now I'd like to talk a little bit more about some of the programs that we're proposing to do and who are some of the entities we're proposing to grant these resources to. The Salem Housing Authority has stepped up to the plate once again in regards to funding or providing the funds for the mortgage payment program to low income households. We can pay up to three months of someone's mortgage if we're able to determine that those individuals have been unable to afford their mortgage due to the loss of income and or a reduction in the hours in which they had previously been working. In addition to that, the micro business assistance program with Lament Workforce Partnership has stepped up and said, yes, we will run your micro business assistance program. We will look at assisting those businesses between zero and five employees with those things that were unanticipated costs associated with COVID, including their lease payments, utilities. Because even though the community businesses were shut down, those things continued to accrue. We also know that they will be mandated to reopen by making sure that they comply with the social distancing rule, which includes additional cleaning requirements, some protective personal equipment or PPPPE and some increased payments for frontline staff. And these resources are suggested to be at three thousand dollars, up to three thousand dollars. With that, we can help approximately sixty micro business owners. As I discussed earlier, Meals on Wheels provides a nutritious meal to seniors as well as daily visits. Because they are in a vulnerable population, we don't want them to be out and about in the community. And therefore, this is a way for them not only to get the meal, but also get a daily visit and a safety check, a wellness check. So we are pleased to be able to help Marion Polk Food Share, who is a wonderful partner in providing nutrition not only for seniors, but also for other others in the community. The rent and utility assistance program would be approximately three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. This is in addition to what the state is providing through our partner of Community Action Agency. We will have in place a way to make sure that duplicate services are not provided to the same family. These resources will be paid directly to the landlord as the mortgage payments will be paid directly to the mortgage company. We can pay up to three months of COVID related rental arrears for eligible income households. We are really pleased that we were able to get three new sub recipients to assist us in making sure that the money got to culturally specific organizations who will make sure that we meet our fair housing and equity lens from which we work from within the city. Seed of Faith Ministries, Mono a Mono, the Salem Housing Authority, and IBC or Island Boy Camp are the four entities which we will be working with to get these resources to our community members. Next steps. Should council approve tonight's proposed amendments, we will then submit those amendments to HUD for review and their approval, complete some environmental reviews as well as sub recipient agreements. And it's our target date to have some of these projects and programs implemented by mid July. Of course, the staff will provide ongoing monitoring, technical assistance and program evaluation with the report back to the public and council in August of twenty twenty one. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
This is Counselor Leung. I do have one question. It's it's on the report on page five on the rent assistance programs. How were the several of those groups identified as groups in need of of financial assistance? And how would they? The second question to that would be, what are the reporting requirements in terms of what they would need to report back and how they utilize the funds?
Thank you, counselor. Seed of Faith Ministries, Mono a Mono and Salem Housing Authority, along with Island Boy Camps, we went to one of our partners, the school district, and asked them who were some of the entities that they worked with. Those were three that they were familiar with. When, on June the eighth, you'll get our twenty twenty, twenty twenty four consolidated plan. And you will notice that during the analysis of a pedimist affair housing, it was determined that persons of color were not accessing some of the resources that the city had available. And these were three culturally focused organizations. I had personally worked with Island Boy Camp myself, so I was familiar with them and their work that they had been doing, but the school district had also through their office of equity and cultural advancement. And their work that they had been doing, but the school district had also through their office of equity and cultural advancement. Had also worked with them. The same thing with Seed of Faith Ministries. Now, in regards to how they will receive and have received. Documents that will have self certifications for the individuals who are going to be uh. Participated in the program. They al- we also will be submitting quarterly reports to the staff. And we will be doing monitoring at their site if possible. Uh with social distancing in mind to make sure that the programs are meeting the needs of the community population. As designed by the federal government.
A- any other questions, Counselor Young? Did you have anything else?
No, that was the main one. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, uh did we have any public comment, Shelley, that you need to share with us?
I'm gonna push that off to Kristen because she's been.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. We do have the public comment that was attached and received prior to this meeting. Uh we have no new public comment that occurred during the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh Counselor Hoy, do you wanna, I'm gonna, if there's no more question, I'm gonna close this public hearing. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we adopt the amendments to the twenty fifteen dash twenty nineteen Consolidated Plan. Citizens Participation Plan, Participation Plan, twenty eighteen Annual Action Plan. And twenty nineteen Annual Action Plan and direct staff to submit the A A P amendments and required forms to the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second by Anderson. A discussion, counselor? Okay, uh if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Lewis?
Hi.
Counselor Kazer?
Hi.
Counselor Anderson?
Hi.
Counselor Nanki is absent. Counselor Leon?
Hi.
Counselor Osik?
Hi.
Counselor Hoy?
Hi.
Counselor Nordike?
Hi.
And Mayor Bennett?
Hi, okay, motion passes. Alrighty, very good. Go to Special Orders of Business. First up is Counselor Anderson. You're unmute yourself.
I thought I did, but my.
Very good.
Yeah, my fingers didn't hit the right button.
Ah, okay.
Um, yes, I move that the um. The council will approve a proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Second. Second by Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some words. Um I'm not gonna add to what the we've gotten, I don't know, a half dozen emails or so from Moms Demand Gun Action. Which is the prime mover behind this and I'm not gonna add to anything they said. I just am gonna point out that um we have had some mass shootings in Oregon. And the first one goes back to nineteen seventy seven where six were killed outside of Cl- Clamath Falls nightclub. Then nineteen eighty one, which some of you may remember, five were killed and eighteen were wounded in Salem in a crowded bar. Uh nineteen eighty four, one was killed, one was wounded, plus a suicide at Austin Stadium. In nineteen ninety eight, four were killed, twenty five were wounded. That's the Kip Kinkle, Kingle. Kinkle e- episode at Thurston High School where I have friends who had children who were in the cafeteria that day. Two thousand seven, ten wounded at a high school aggression. Two thousand nine, two killed, seven wounded and suicide at a nightclub in Portland. Two thousand twelve, two killed, one wounded, one suicide at Clackamas Town Center. Two thousand fourteen, one wounded, one killed at Reynolds High School. Two thousand fifteen, um nine killed and nine wounded plus the suicide at Umco Community College. So, yes, this is a national problem, but it's also a problem that's here in Oregon. And it seems to me that uh uh the least we could do is uh is pass this proclamation. And then also urge people to wear orange on um January fifth.
June fifth.
June fifth, yeah, thank you.
You bet.
You can wear it on January fifth too, but.
Anytime. Any, any further discussion? Hey, if the uh if the recorder would call the roll?
Counselor Kazer?
Hi.
Counselor Anderson?
Hi.
Counselor Nanki is absent. Counselor Leon?
Hi.
Counselor Osik?
Hi.
Counselor Hoy?
Hi.
Counselor Nordike?
Hi.
Counselor Lewis?
Hi.
And Mayor Bennett?
No. Hey, motion passes. So we're all done. Now we'll move on to the, Counselor Anderson, I think you're on for the evening now. Well, we'll start with Kazer on two.
Not completely. Got Counselor Kazer and Counselor Lewis also pulled some of the.
Very good. Counselor Kazer, we'll let you go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I pulled the these property acquisitions from Marine Drive. Um and procedurally, I'm not sure how we do this.
One at a, one at a time.
So I move, I move staff recommendation on um item two point three A.
Second.
Second.
Second by Anderson? Was that you? No.
Louis.
Louis. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh so I pulled these just so we could talk about them because I I feel like they're a long time coming, a little bit. Since our two thousand eight bridges and streets bond. Um I have a few questions, but let me truly unmute myself here. There we go. I have both hands available. Uh so I think these are more gonna be directed at um. I guess it would be Director Fernandez, even though Director Rutherford is identified on the staff report. So whoever would like to jump in, but um. A couple of questions. The first is that this is great that we're acquiring the right of way for these three properties. My question is, what's the plan for acquiring the additional right of way? Do we, do we have a plan or a strategy in place for doing that? My understanding is that these uh. Property owners are the willing sellers at this point, but we may have not made contact with all of the property owners along the right of way. Uh but could, could you talk about what what the plan is after these purchases and and how much money we have left out of our streets and bridges bond? Uh and what's, how does the future look for getting the rest of Marine Drive uh acquired?
Uh Clint Dameron can explain uh to council the procedures we took per the council direction regarding property acquisitions. So Clint?
Clint, would you start off with the Clarks? That's the motion we've got on the table, just to understand how you, how you came to work with them.
Sure, um so we've been working on and off with the Clarks on multiple issues over the last ten years that I've been around. Um, the Clark family, uh they actually, the Clark family has two different uh ownerships. Uh the one under consideration tonight is the mother and the father, Donna and Mary Clark. And they have a very large parcel and the biggest impact to their parcel. Um which because Marine Drive goes right through where their house is located. So this is by far the biggest impact uh and take. Worked with them, did a full appraisal on this property because of the the impact. Uh negotiated back and forth with what do they want to keep, what do they want to sell? And we finally came to the arrangement uh you see in the purchase and sale agreement.
Okay, you wanna move forward then to, I I I, as I understand what what the counselor asked is, what then about the uh Barfneck?
Uh again, so Barfneck is a little further south. Um and to take a step back, actually, uh we are acquiring a lot of these, you'll see. As a uh street and roadway easement to avoid costly land use procedures right now at Polk County. So uh we're gonna pay fee value for the necessary right of way. Um but do it as an easement for now and then we'll convert it to to right of way at the proper time. When the property gets developed by a third party, it'll save us a ton of money in staff time and cost.
Okay, and the Spingass, what's the story?
Uh Spingath is very similar to Barfneck. They are, uh they join um just south of the Barfneck. Uh property, so very similar acquisition. Uh these two and a lot of the owners. Um felt this way, the Marine Drive right of ways is more or less right on the urban growth boundary line. So everything outside the urban growth boundary to the east is really unusable property. It's floodway. It's outside the U G B and it didn't appraise much on a per square foot basis, thirty seven cents a foot, which is nothing. Uh so unless you're farming it, there's really not a whole lot of use for it. Um so most folks we've talked to have said, I'll, I'll, I'll sell you the right of way, but you need to take everything else to the east as well. So that's how we got into acquiring all this other land outside the U G B. Um that's in the floodway that doesn't.
And I, I think that the thing that is is most, I if I understood what the counselor asked and she'll correct me, but. Now what? Where are we now then, moving forward? What's your plans? What are your contact strategies? How do we work our way through this thing?
Um, the council's direction was to take the roughly three point eight million dollars uh that was left over from the street and bridges bond. And get the right of way we could strategically trying to get pieces that might have the most immediate impact. Um out of the seventeen or eighteen uh folks we contacted, we heard back from six. Uh we have these three tonight. Uh we may have two to three more in the next uh next few months. And the rest did not, uh you know, after multiple phone calls, uh mailings didn't even respond to us, so. Um in discussing with Public Works, there's a lot of uh survey work and land use cost. Um going into this on top of the the right of way acquisition cost, so. Um bear with me a second, let me pull up my budget spreadsheet. So after all these acquisitions and what we spent today and what we think we're gonna spend. Um on survey work and land use, after all these three are done, assuming they go through tonight. Uh we'll have about one point one million still available uh to go out and and try to hit the the folks again to. Bring them to the table.
Counselor Kazer, do you wanna follow up with?
Y- yes, I do. Um, thank you, Clint. Um. One of the the things that came up recently is, and I think we saw it in a letter to the council from Steve Anderson. There i- it sounds like there is desire on the part of neighbors, either within West Salem Neighborhood Association. Or a group that are just interested in seeing Marine Drive getting constructed or right away acquired, constructed ultimately. Um uh their opportunity with the, the city to partner with a group like that, like West Salem Neighborhood. Or like the the Friends of Marine Drive or or whoever, because I think the feeling is they might be able to help. Uh facilitate conversations with those property owners that have not responded to the city because they have those personal relationships with them. Um just to get that conversation started. Um I don't know if we've reached out already to them, but curious as to, that might not be typical. But it's kind of a, perhaps not a super typical situation either.
Right, so the uh the group Friends of Marine Drive, and I don't know how formal the group they are. They contacted me uh shortly after, I believe it was last June, when council gave us this direction. Uh and then in talking with uh the legal department, um I was asked to communicate to them that the formation of any. Uh citizen committee or group needed to be um uh run through the mayor's office. So that's what I communicated to them and Dan could jump in and correct me if I misspoke on that.
Nobody, nobody asked.
And there. So that, I mean, it sounds like that might be, I don't know, so much a council direction, but some type of. More formal direction would be needed then. For, I I don't know exactly procedurally how that would, how that would work or or what would be necessary.
Have them call me. I mean, I'll, fine with me if they set up an organization unless the city attorney jumps in and says he doesn't want one. Yeah, just have them call me. I'm not sure what my role is in that, but.
Uh, so, and if I had, I had uh one more question. Um so Clint, you were talking about the land east of Marine Drive, which is um primarily just. Um not floodway, but it's not, you can't really build anything on it.
It, most of it actually is floodway and outside the U G B.
I know that there is some land there specifically that is um essentially have not been touched. Um because it's not farmable, it's not really usable in 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 modern ways. Um it's a pretty natural old growth habitat and I know there is desire to protect that as natural area. Um and I've actually been back there. It's quite beautiful, really, for something so close to the city. Um but knowing that some of this stuff is outside of the U G B, what is the process for bringing it into the city limits? And then I guess, what's the process for zoning that um appropriately? Uh in in, and I don't know if you, if you know Clint or um others here, I see you're jumping on their video right now.
I would defer to uh the uh Community Development Department on zoning issues and annexation issues.
Well, what is typically, how do we get that in the city? Is that a council action or would that come at a later date or?
Dan, I think I can speak to that generally, so um. Um the city can annex uh property that that's outside the U G B, so technically we could proceed with an annexation now on properties there. Um we couldn't develop it with an urban facility until it was uh included within the U G B. And that requires a rather substantial land use process to to expand it.
Then I guess, sorry, the follow up to that is, do we need to even do that? If we wanna preserve this, if there's desire to preserve this as a, just a natural space, is that even a necessary?
Uh several, several of the folks, I'm sorry, Kristen.
I was going to say that we could also just put a conservation easement on it.
So, yeah, so several of the folks had mentioned something like that. And um at that point in the negotiations, I said, you know, well, if you want to. Further restrict the rights we're purchasing, there would be an impact to the value we're paying for. And they understood that. Most people then said, oh, okay, proceed as planned. Um but I did reiterate to them, you know, it's outside the U G B, it's in a floodway. Uh in talking with Director Fernandez, you know, we have, the city has no plans to do anything with this property. You know, it's gonna sit as natural property for as long as anybody could foresee. Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Anderson? Unmute yourself, Tom.
We're talking about uh uh two point three A, but. Appropriately so, the mayor sort of uh expanded that because all three of these are pretty much connected, so I have some general questions. Um, couple of them are panhandle lots. And is that a panhandle lot that e- it goes over to Wallace Drive and is that for the city? Uh uh you know, from Marine Drive over to Wallace Drive or is it for the owners who want to get? To some of their other property that they haven't sold to us and I I guess now I'm not so. A lot of that they're selling to us, it looks like, but we have this subservient property and uh could you explain all that?
So uh I think you're specifically talking about the Clark property. And the way it sits now, it does have a a flagpole out to Wallace Road, which is their, their only access to and from Wallace. So um part of the deal we have with them, would they would get uh an access easement over that flagpole. Uh across the property we're buying, all the way to the property they are keeping to the east.
Okay.
And then it's uh, that easement will automatically extinguish when that portion of Marine Drive is constructed. And they have other access uh to their land.
Got it. So they own property on uh further east from what we're already, what we're buying uh in the the flood plain sort of stuff.
Correct. They, they desire to keep everything outside the U G B because they do actively farm.
So that explains the easement to me and that makes sense. It's easement until Marine Drive is built, basically. Then, um, I couldn't, I looked at MapQuest and Google Earth and all sorts of things and I couldn't find Beckett Street.
So, um, Beckett Street is on, uh, actually, let me share.
Is that Waiting for Godot? Is that the same thing if we're talking about playwrights? I think Beckett. Anyway, go ahead, sorry.
So Beckett Street um is, if you can see my pro- my screen here.
Not yet.
Okay.
Is it shown yet?
Okay, that, that answers my question completely.
Okay, so.
Go ahead.
Uh Beckett Street right now, I believe, is is in the T S P as part of the Marine Drive property. Um, this Beckett Drive actually splits, there's a couple of black property lines missing. This Beckett Drive actually splits, there's a couple of black property lines missing on this. This map, this black line here extends all the way over, as does this black line. So.
Yeah.
Uh, the property line is right down the middle of Beckett and it's meant to. To line up with this intersection here.
Got it, got it. So it will be a way to go back and forth between Marine Drive and Wallace.
Well, that's the thought. Uh, this, so the, where it says Beckett Street here, this is the Spingath's property.
Okay, got it. Yeah, no, I can see that the Spingath and the, uh, Barfneck. Uh, properties, they're contiguous to each other. Um.
Yeah, Barfneck is up here.
Okay, so I.
So.
That answers my other question that I was going to discuss, and I don't have to now. Our, our big, uh, discussion about buying right of way on the Cameo versus buying right of way on Fifth and where that shows up. And so that is consistent with the council's direction, I believe. That we want you to proceed with buying all the right of way you can north of where, uh, 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 uh. Fifth Street or Cameo would connect into, into, uh, Marine Drive.
Okay, well, let me, let me clarify real quickly. So Beckett Street, half of this is on the Spingath's property.
Okay.
At this time, they did not wish to sell the Beckett Street property as it impacts their.
Okay.
Their house.
Okay.
So our deal with them is really just for this Marine Drive portion. Uh, and everything to the east.
And but in the future, we're going to work that out one way or the other.
Right. They, they wanted, they wanted to discuss, move Beckett Street north or south somewhere else.
Okay.
And I, I said, that's kind of out of the scope of what I was tasked to do. So.
Sure, sure.
At this time, we're just doing the Marine Drive proper.
That, that dovetails into my other questions. I presume that some of the people who you've contacted, who have not contacted you. We may end up with some sort of, um. Uh, uh, council action to go ahead and purchase that property. I don't know why the term escapes me now, but you know, when we say we want to buy that property and we go, we.
Eminent domain is.
Thank you. That's it. Thanks, Mayor. Once again, you saved me. Eminent domain. I presume we may. End up in eminent domain. And then a follow-up question on that. We only have one point one million dollars left and we certainly have spent a big chunk of it here, but I presume. The other properties are going to be on the lower end of the price scale as opposed to, uh, one point, uh, three, five. Uh, million dollars.
Right. So the Clark property is, A, it's one of the bigger properties and B, it involved a full take of a house.
Okay.
And a very large chunk of multifamily property.
Okay.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes, thank you. Um, actually, if we could leave this, uh, Clint on the screen, I think it'll help with my question. Um, I wanted to go back to, I think it was Counselor Kazer who mentioned that. We had received a letter from. Uh, Steve Anderson, Friends of Marine Drive. And I'm, I'm confused by a couple of the statements, uh, in the letter. Um. So I just want to verify on the screen in front of us, the red dotted line, including Beckett Street. Is the layout, the layout for Marine Drive in the city's transportation plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the instruction that staff was given to purchase property, uh, north of Fifth Street up to, um, River Bend. That did not change the transportation plan, correct?
Correct.
If I wanted to change the transportation plan and do away with that part of Marine Drive that goes along the park and then ends up going north. How would I do that?
Uh, I would defer to the city attorney or community development to answer that.
I will, uh, take a stab at that. You would, uh, need to have council, uh, approve a amendment to the, uh, transportation system plan, which.
Then that would, that would require a public hearing.
Correct.
Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? I'm just looking. On this.
Mayor, if I could, there's been a couple of questions about acquiring, um, Counselor Lewis just said north of Fifth Street. Uh, staff and I went back and listened to the original June direction. Uh, and if anybody recalls, that was about a thirty or forty minute conversation where it was. Uh, motions and second motions. So, um, we gleaned that council directed us to acquire property from this location here. Which is where Marine, future Marine Drive meets future Fifth Avenue North.
Okay.
And, uh, the letter, uh, Counselor Kazer referred to. You know, some people said, no, it would also include this piece here, this piece here. But not, you know, these pieces down here that actually have homes on them at this point.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, we were going under the assumption, council said from this point north. So we did not contact anybody. South of this intersection.
Okay. Very good. Uh, is, can you pull your, uh. Your screen off then for a minute? Great. Thank you very much, Counselor Kazer.
Thank you. Well, with, with that kind of clarification, Clint, um, of how staff interpreted the motion, um. I, as the motion maker back in June, that's, that was not my intent. Um, so that possibly will need clarification, I guess, coming from council. And I don't know. Exactly. Again, the process for doing that. Um, I'm not going to try it on the fly here, but.
Yeah.
I think I will be bringing back something soon to really clarify what my motion was last June, um, so that that's clear.
Great. Okay, um. Are, are we prepared then to vote on, uh, two A? Two, three A, I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, which is the staff recommendation, say aye, or no. I'm sorry, the recorder will call the roll. I apologize.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nakey is absent. Counselor Leung?
Sorry.
Counselor Osik? Counselor Hoy?
Unmute.
I thought I did. Aye.
Counselor Nordike? Oh, need to unmute.
So sorry, I thought I was doing so well at that. Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Counselor Kazer, two point three B. Your motion?
Move staff recommendation on item two point three B.
Second.
Second by Hoy. You need any further discussion on this?
No, I don't have any further comment.
Anyone else? Okay, if you'd called, oh, sorry, Counselor Nordike.
No, just briefly, just a comment. I see, uh, these property purchases as steps in the right direction, both from a traffic congestion point of view and for creating more pedestrian, more bicycle access, just more alternative routes in general. So I'm happy to see that these are on the agenda. I was not around in June, obviously, but I'm delighted to see that they're on here tonight. And I really appreciate the thoughtful comments from my peers and I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Lewis, did you, were you raising your hand or?
No, just waving.
Just waving, okay. Uh, if you'd call the roll.
Hey, Counselor Nakey is absent. Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osik? I'll go back. Uh, Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
And I'll go back to Counselor Osik?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. We'll go to, uh. Two point three C.
I move staff recommendation for item two point three C.
Second.
Second. Second by Anderson.
I have no further comments.
Okay. Okay, I don't see anyone else's hand up, so we'll have the recorder call the roll.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nakey is absent and Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll go to two point three E. Counselor Anderson?
You're unmute.
Unmute, Tom.
I've been trying to.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Hoy.
Um. Excuse me, I'm trying to find it here. Um, we had a discussion about this, uh, earlier. Um, and I, I just want to say that, uh, um. The things that I say all the time about this, my two-word mantra, hanging bridge, hanging bridge. But I think this is a very good situation and, um. My understanding is that this will also allow us to eventually, hopefully. Uh, end up with a path that goes all the way from South Minto Brown Island Park all the way up to Riverfront Park, which should be terrific for recreation and family use. But it would also be terrific for a wonderful bike commute path to get from South Salem without having to go on River Road, which especially going south is, uh, pretty miserable. So I think this is a, a great thing and thank you, uh, Mountain West for their contributions of, uh, the park property.
Yeah, this is a, I, I just a, a little. This has been a, an important, uh. Decision really by multiple city councils to keep heading down this direction, including the hanging bridge and the connections down to, uh, this, down to, uh, Minto Island going south on the slough side. It's very, uh, gratifying to see this come to a realization after all these years. And, uh, like Counselor Anderson, I want to thank Mountain West for their generosity and, uh, donating this property. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if you'd call the roll.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nakey is absent. Counselor Leung?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye, motion passes. Two point three H, Counselor Anderson.
I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by Hoy.
Mr. Mayor, if I could speak just a little bit, this was, uh, uh, Shelley, uh, gave a report about various things that relate to this as well. Um, I think this is wonderful and I really just brought it up so we can make sure it's published and, uh, as widely as possible. So everybody knows about this. And I know from the plan that there is a whole lot of work going on by, um. The, the staff, the community development and urban renewal, I think, excuse me, and re- uh, um, responsible for allocation of these funds. And I also appreciate the fact that from the last meeting, we had some comments about, we don't want it to be a race to, to file and how it's going to be on a lottery system, which is, uh, basically the, uh, most fair way to do it. So, uh, I applaud the staff for getting these funds and I urge, uh, everyone of the small business, uh, community and, uh, in the affected areas to, uh, apply for a grant and hopefully we can get everybody something. So thanks.
Yeah, I want to second, uh, Counselor Anderson's comments just briefly. Uh, I want to really thank, uh, Kristin Rutherford for the tremendous work she's done on. Really putting this together over the past several months, developing the strategy to get to the point that we could make this kind of, uh, program available to small businesses. Uh, uh, really tremendous use of, of both, uh. Uh, federal and local funds to create this kind of a, a program available. It took some really very, very hard work on her and her staff's part. So thank you very much, Kristin. It was really outstanding work. Uh, any, uh, any further discussion? All that, well, we'll, uh, we'll have the recorder call the roll.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nakey is absent. Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye, motion passes. Two point three J, Counselor Anderson?
Uh, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
There's really not much to say here. The same principles that we already discussed about in the motion we just passed apply here. Kudos again to staff and, and, um, request everybody out there who might be eligible for these grants to get them in.
Yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, uh, we'll have the, uh, recorder call the roll.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nakey is absent. Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, we have, uh, information reports. Any questions, discussions? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This relates to item five B. We are now on a third request for a two-year extension of the approval. Uh, so we're now, it was the. Uh, the approval to do, I don't remember now what they wanted to do, but I think it was a partition. The, I hope they remember, the approval was given in two thousand fourteen. It came back in two thousand sixteen for two years. It came back in two thousand eighteen for two years. So back in two thousand twenty for two years. How long has this been going on and will it ever stop?
Hi, so this is, uh, this is Community Director Norman Wright. I want to make sure, can everyone hear me first of all? Okay, great. Thanks. So, um, I have similar questions, Counselor Anderson. And so the staff report does reflect that there have been four extensions for ten years total. And, uh, I think it's safe to say that, uh, from what we understand by our staff, that there have been no concerns or, or comments even offered by, uh, the notified public. And so this is an extension to maintain flexibility for the property and the property owner until they find the right time. And we see no issue in continuing with these extensions for, uh, previous approval.
If it's okay with you, it's okay with me.
Okay, well, let's find out if it's okay with everyone else. I guess we won't be voting. Thank you though, Tom, for bringing that one up. It's always interesting to follow these historic partitioning events. Uh, any, uh, anything else? We are adjourned.